This agenda.
Um, Jay, can you help us up?
Dear God, I thank you this day and the time we come to have to do the town's business. We thank you for the beautiful weather, Lord. We thank you for all you give and provide for us, Lord. We're just thankful for allowing us the opportunity to come together in a free country and to celebrate our election workers, God, and the fact that we get to even have the election, Lord. We thank you for that privilege we have, and we don't take it for granted. Ashley Tenny, please. Be our troops and keep them safe. In your name, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
John Beasley, thirty-seven sixteen Lee Street. I want to welcome everybody here to the first meeting in April. Doing little things different because I've got a couple of proclamations to read, and instead of going back there, coming out here, going back, I'm gonna do it all from here. But we start off every meeting with the Pledge of Civility. We will be respectful of one another even when we disagree. We will direct all comments to the issues, and we will avoid personal attacks. The first proclamation is for the Town Council to designate April twenty-twenty-five as Election Worker Appreciation Month in the town of Hilliard. And it's a long one. Thank you, Ms. Janet. A proclamation of the town of Hilliard designating April twenty-twenty-five as Election Workers Appreciation Month in the town of Hilliard. Whereas Article Four, Section Four of the United States Constitution requires the United States to guarantee to the states a republican form of government, and whereas the constitutionally mandated republican form of government is one in which the people govern through elections, and whereas in Westbury versus Sanders, Justin Hugo Black wrote that no right is more precious in a free country than that of having a voice in the election of those who make the laws under which, as good citizens, we must live. Other rights, even the most basic, are illusory if the right to vote is undermined, and whereas the Fifteenth Amendment of the United States Constitution is enforced by the Voting Rights Act of nineteen-sixty-five and provides that the right of citizens of the United States to vote shall not be denied or bridged on account of race, color, or previous condition of servitude. And whereas the Nineteenth Amendment of the United States Constitution provides that the right of the citizens of the United States to vote shall not be denied or bridged on account of sex. And whereas, where in the words of Lyndon B. Johnson, "The vote is the most powerful instrument ever devised by man for breaking down injustice and destroying the terrible walls which imprison men because they are different from other men." And whereas elections serve as a beacon of freedom and fairness, and whereas the conscientious efforts of Nassau County election workers make safe, accurate, and secure elections possible, whereas a public office is a public trust, and the knowledge, skills, and competence demonstrated by election workers strengthen the trust and confidence that Nassau County voters have in our elections. Whereas three hundred and seventy-four election workers served Nassau County voters during the twenty-twenty-four election, serving as clerks, assistant clerks, voting system specialists, assistant voting system specialists, EVID operators, deputies, early voting couriers, survey specialists, line attendants, secure ballot intake station attendants, canvassing board opening teams, and election technicians. And whereas Nassau County election workers assist with equipment testing, precinct cabinet assembly, polling place setup, supervised voting, and canvassing board activities, and assisted the historic voter turnout of eighty-five point five-one percent in the twenty-twenty-four general election. And whereas Nassau County election workers participate in local outreach events and voter registration drives throughout the year. Whereas we wish to recognize and thank all Nassau County election workers who demonstrate a true commitment to serving voters and showing kindness through their service. Now, therefore, I, John P. Beasley, Mayor of the town of Hilliard, do hereby acknowledge and commend the many election workers who lend their time, skill, and effort to make extraordinary contributions to voters in Nassau County, and proclaim the month of April twenty-twenty-five as Election Worker Appreciation Month in the town of Hilliard, Nassau County, Florida. Ms. Atkins, if you want to come up, we'll...
That's why I'm back here, to give you the...
No, no, no. I see election workers. Come on.
And I can tell you, many, many years ago, I was an election worker. I worked a few elections, and it's a, it's a long day.
It's a long day.
It's a long day. Coming in here.
Yes. All right. Who's gonna accept it? Because I'm not an election worker.
I want to get her around, so you should be nice to the day.
So, who's gonna accept it? Emily? All right. Emily's one of our votes. He's got it.
Yeah. That's on the number one.
Who's supposed to be there?
They're talking. All right, Ms. Atkins, you want to say something?
So first, let me just thank the council here for recognizing our election workers. The people we have here represent a hundred and seven years of election experience collectively. As, as the proclamation states, we cannot do elections without our fantastic election workers. So it's fitting that after the tremendous year we had in twenty-twenty-four, that the town of Hilliard and all of Nassau County recognized the great work done by our election workers. Florida law requires that if you're going to serve in an election in, in Florida, you must be a registered voter in that county. And so all of our election workers are our friends, they're our family, family members. And so we take this time to say thank you. We appreciate you.
All right, the next proclamation is Town Council to designate April twenty-twenty-five as Water Conservation Month. A proclamation of the town of Hilliard designating April twenty-twenty-five as Water Conservation Month in the town of Hilliard. Whereas water is a basic and essential need of every living creature, and whereas the state of Florida, Water Management Districts, and the town of Hilliard are working together to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation. And whereas the town of Hilliard and the state of Florida has designated April typically a dry month when water demands are most acute, Florida's Water Conservation Month to educate citizens about how they can help save Florida's precious water, water resources, and, excuse me. And whereas the town of Hilliard has always encouraged and supported water conservation through various educational programs and special events, and whereas every business, industry, school, and citizen can make a difference when it comes to conserving water, and whereas every business, industry, school, and citizen can help by saving water and thus promote a healthy economy and community, and whereas efficient irrigation design, programming, and maintenance can conserve water, the town of Hilliard will encourage citizens and businesses to evaluate their irrigation systems for potential efficiency enhancements. Now, therefore, be it resolved that by virtue of the authority vested in me, John P. Beasley, as Mayor of the town of Hilliard, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Water Conservation Month. And the town of Hilliard is, Florida is calling on each citizen and business to help protect our precious resource by practicing water-saving measures and becoming more aware of the need to save water. For this, the twenty-seventh year of Water Conservation Month, there will be a special focus on irrigation system evaluations.
That will now... I know if you want to say a few words. Something like a... I hope Michael will be able to turn it back on. Thank you. Yes, sir.
All right. I want to thank you so much for, once again, this is our twenty-seventh year, the state is recognizing April as Water Conservation Month. But the reality is, it should be a daily diligence if we expect to adequately and effectively protect our water supply. This, this night, typically when I do these, I talk about if you have so many drips this or do that, or you don't do irrigation, here are the thousands of gallons you're going to waste. I just want to briefly mention the document that we produce that actually governs the water supply that we are told by Tallahassee that we go out and we work with governments to protect this water supply. Northeast Florida's had it good for quite a while. It doesn't bubble to the top of issues that you deal with in other areas like infrastructure growth and other comp plan items that impact your community. But lately, it has. And the Water Supply Plan first came about in twenty-seventeen, and it identified deficiencies that weren't necessarily bubbling to the top, but are the, it's like the low oil light in the car. It's telling you, you better start doing some maintenance, or you're going to have some big issues. And where it tells us these things are whether the aquifer gets close to the surface. For example, we just are wrapping up a big hundred-and-twenty-million-dollar project down, you've heard of it, the Black Creek Water Resource Project, where we are actually taking water from Black Creek, pumping it seventeen miles south to Keystone Heights, filtering it to get out some of the tannins from the Black Creek water, and then it will flow into a creek and into Lake Brooklyn, which is a high recharge area for the aquifer. It will also help the lakes ultimately down there as the aquifer gets healthy. But if you watch our meetings, the second Tuesday of every month, the hydrology report in the very beginning, details in the district, are what the aquifer level's doing, what the springs are doing, what the lakes are doing, which kind of gives you the health of what we're, what we need to do. And we're entering a dry time. Last year, during this time, we entered a three-month, very hot and dry time, and a lot of utilities were having problems, especially the ones with reclaimed water. They were running out. But twenty-forty-five, the Water Supply Plan details that in North Florida, especially in the St. John's River Water Management part of it, we'll be pulling full, five-hundred-and-ten million gallons a day out of the aquifer. That's a thirty percent increase over twenty-fifteen. So growth is having an impact. But one of the key elements is conservation. The district, we work with local governments, you see me here all the time, we're working with the county and utilities on conservation elements, and working with citizens, education, reclaimed water, alternative water supply, things to get us away from using potable water for nothing more than potable water and using the lowest quality water source. So we're, we're working very hard by working with you. Since twenty-twenty, this district has spent two-point-seven million dollars paying for to plug unused and abandoned artesian wells, a relic from the past, but yet those free-flowing wells waste a lot of water. And in that time, we've saved seventy-eight-point-four million gallons a day with that process. So that is a, a big help to folks. Now, the one that is probably, the people don't put the two together, but the Water Supply Plan, because when we detail, we have issues, minimum flows and levels is that term that you will hear. And the big one that's right next to you is over in the lower Exuctionee-Suwani River area. Those MFLs are impacting consumptive use permits over in St. John's County, Clay County, Nassau, McLennie, Ferneadeen Beach, Aston, because the permits they're getting are reduced timeframe because we are trying to assess are the measures we are putting in place taking effect. Because those low oil lights, those areas where the aquifer's telling us, I've got a problem, you better do something, or we're going to have some major ecosystem problems. So that's why if your permit's coming up, that might be something you, you're going to be asked, what are you doing for conservation? Because everybody's being asked to ramp up their conservation, especially the utilities, since they're in a really a prime position to know who's using water, when they're using water, or what can we do to drive people to lowest quality. You can do it in planning. I noticed that you're starting to grow, you have these puddles. And in those puddles, they have the ability to put in some measures because now you're able to detail one hundred, two hundred, three hundred homes. So that's going on throughout the, the state. So there is a good bill, working with builders, developers, they can be an asset to you, helping to meet some of those water conservation measures. But water conservation is like New Year's resolution. Resolutions, it's just not a one-day thing, all right? We're starting this year, I'm going to do this. It's a daily thing. We have, in order for it to be successful, you need a plan, you need disciplined implementation, and you need achievable metrics if we expect to have sustainable conservation. So that's why this is so important, and it's really starting to bubble up. The reason I say that is, conservation is cheap. And you know, everybody, once a month, gets that reminder from the utility when they get their bill, how much water have I used? Have I gone up into those tiers that get really expensive? Or, jeez, I think I may have a leak. I better take care of this, because it gets really expensive. But we can't keep affording those for the projects. But there is one project that is in the conceptual phase to address the Suwani MFL, so the utilities can be a part of the solution, but it makes, by a factor of ten, the Black Creek Water Project look like chump change in terms of how big it will be and how much water it will push from Jacksonville over there. So, you know, those are, yes, we are going to have to do that, we're looking at it, but it's, I like conservation. It's cheaper, it brings citizens participate in that. So I just want to say thank you for the commission, your staff, the citizens, for their diligence in protecting our water source, because, you know, it's, it's, it's going to, it's going to require some diligence on all our part, you'll hear more about that. And the North Florida Regional Water Supply does actually have some homework for you. The Water Supply Facilities Work Plan is a statutory requirement of that for governments to update. Nassau's working on it, and I was in St. John's, they're working on it, Clay's working on it, everybody has to do it. So your planners and your, or your utilities should be working with that. If not, we have a gentleman that will walk you through this process. We're helping Baker, we're helping McLennie, we're helping Baldwin. Anybody that needs assistance, that's a homework. And I just say, we want that to be done by twelve June, that's the statutory requirement, just so that we can say, everybody's done their homework assignment, and we're marching forward with the plan. So again, thank you so much for your support. I always look forward to coming here, and thank you again for your service.
Thank you. Ms. Janet, if y'all want to go...
Is y'all welcome to the hall, please?
You're welcome to stand, too. It's up to you.
All right. Item number three, the Nassau County Assistant County Manager to provide a general overview of the Live Local Act, SB one oh two, and answer questions that the Town Council may have. Marshall Arment. I want to know what your acronym stands for. The I C M A C N.
So the International City Managers Association Credential Manager. Well, thank you, Mayor, council members. So first, the disclaimers. Not the planning expert, not the legal expert, so there might be other questions with Live Local that we're not able to answer today. But we're asked to kind of give the same presentation that we provided to our commission a little while ago as we were addressing items with Live Local. So I believe you have the handouts, or you have it on your iPads. So walking through slide two, just kind of the, the general overview, right? So the original Affordable Housing Bill passed two thousand and three, they've been implementing it. Kind of the, the general broad spectrum is it allows affordable housing on commercial, industrial, and mixed-use properties. And to become a qualified property, essentially forty percent of your units have to be deemed affordable. Most of this is then administratively approved through the V O C C or the towns. And these affordable projects allow up to a hundred percent tax exemptions, depending on the affordability covenants under those projects. Now, I will say is that since the time this was adopted, there's a lot of discussion going on at the state. Different counties have different lawsuits going forward. I know in Nassau County, we have not seen one project yet, and so we're waiting for the legislation this year to see what other amendments they're going to do as they try to implement this. It really has gone from the far end of the spectrum that certain counties have said that they will sue any project that comes in, trying to do a project in the Live Local, because essentially it's not constitutional for them to preempt all the land use and provide the property tax exemptions, everything else. So there's a lot to come from this, but this is kind of a moment in time to tell you where we're at. If you're looking at slide three, essentially what the law says is for a qualified affordable housing project, if they're in that eighty to one-twenty percent average median income, and we'll talk about where that range is, that they get up to the seventy-five percent property tax exemptions. And if they're below an eighty percent AMI, they can get up to a hundred percent property tax exemptions, and these exemptions are up for thirty years. If you're jumping to slide four, this will lay out kind of the average median income. So to our disadvantage for the county, we're coupled in with the Jacksonville M S A. So our average median income is in excess of ninety-eight thousand. I'm sure we'll have a new chart coming out soon, and given how the market's been, that probably is going up as well. What that means for a household is there are many different factors when we're looking at the affordability covenants. It's based on the household income, the persons per household, and the number of bedrooms. So when you look at the scenario of a one-bedroom, an individual earning eighty-one thousand dollars, a little bit over that, their affordable housing range to qualify in the eighty to one-twenty is fourteen-hundred-and-sixty to twenty-one-ninety per month for that rent. So we'll talk later about some of the projects at Nassau, one project in Hilliard, to see how this ranks in that area. If you go to slide five, this is when we start getting into how we look at the exemptions. So last year, when we did this report for the Board of County Commissioners, when we look at the Jacksonville M S A from the Schimborgh Report provided through the state, you'll see in the, basically the eighty to one-twenty percent on the far right of the table, there was an excess of units, so an excess of forty-four hundred units for the M S A for that eighty to one-twenty. Once you get below eighty percent AMI, there is a shortfall in units. I provided another update because we have the current numbers, and now what it looks like is there is an excess units of eighty-two hundred units. That deficiency below eighty percent AMI continues to grow. I can tell you what we see in the other parts of the county is we've got a lot of apartment complexes being built, a lot of units, things being almost completed, under construction in different areas from Wildlight to William Burgess. And so really what we're looking at this is we see current and growing surplus in the units. We really need to focus on that below eighty percent AMI. That is where it makes an impact for the individuals that need housing within our area. So jumping to slide six, this just highlights some of the projects in the area. So the law's at Wildlight, one of the apartment complexes there, a one-bedroom unit goes for about fifteen-seventy-nine. Well, that falls right into that eighty to one-twenty rent rate, which is fourteen-sixty to twenty-one-ninety. So under this chart, that market rate unit of fifteen-seventy-nine is considered affordable, and under that law, if you don't do the exemption, you're giving them a seventy-five percent property tax exemption. So that is where the county moved forward to take that eighty to one-twenty and say, we don't want to provide tax exemptions to that category. We really need to incentivize where there's a shortfall in housing and where it really makes an impact to our, our county residents. If you're looking at slide seven, same item that we're looking at here, this is the Mills Creek Preserve off the ninety-five. Again, a one-bedroom, starting at fourteen-ninety, fits right in that eighty to one-twenty, kind of towards the low, low end. And really what it means is, again, if they came in under Live Local for that eighty to one-twenty, their annual property tax liability is about six-hundred-and-forty thousand. So take seventy-five percent of that, that's schools, county, all of the municipalities that, depending on where it lies, are giving up that exemption. I did look at one of the units in Hilliard. This Eastwood Oaks, you will see that that one-bedroom is about eleven-seventy-five, and I forget if that was the refurbished or non-refurbished units. They fall below that eighty percent AMI. This is where sometimes we get the impacts of they use an AMI or an average median income for the entire Jacksonville M S A, and it's not always representative of each jurisdiction and where it's at, right? We might have fourteen hundred is the market rate when you're at Wildlight next to the ninety-five, eleven hundred might be the market rate here. They only provide for the exemption in that eighty to one-twenty. So any projects coming in that might be market rate here, they may still be able to pursue certain things within that category. So going to slide nine, basically that eighty to one-twenty, again, that's a seventy-five percent tax exemption. Tying that tax exemption in there basically creates an unfair competitive advantage. Developers coming in, building market rate units, what they would have done yesterday, suddenly have a tax exemption. So that's what we were trying to focus our efforts in different areas. Again, we've seen is that true workforce housing is at fifty to eighty percent. And typically for us, it's down towards the fifty to sixty percent is where we like to see the units coming in. So when you go to slide eleven, what you're looking at is basically local schools, county taxes, or county property tax exemptions, local tax exemptions, they're all going to fall under this. The problem is that they're still a burden on local government. So when we build an apartment unit, we're still going to have to have the additional fire services, the additional public safety services, water and sewer, all of those items we still need to provide. And so just looking at the simple math, you know, one project, two, two-point-five people per unit, a hundred-and-eighty-eight units, that increases the population by four-hundred-and-seventy people. So I'm going to go over to the sheriff's side where, you know, they like to get two officers per thousand, so we just hired a brand-new officer for this one. And that's one apartment complex. So if they were exempted a hundred percent on those taxes, we have a direct liability that now we have to fund other services, and so it impacts or puts a burden on other taxpayers. Now, a lot of this, that's why it's still being debated at the state legislation, and other counties and other entities are still pursuing different items here, and we hope to see different feedback or modifications in this program. And like I said, the, the agencies are questioning the constitutionality on it. So going to the last slide, slide twelve, basically, we want to focus on affordable housing target of fifty percent. You know, not that anything, not anything that exceeds the eighty percent. We had a resolution, meaning the other parts on affordable housing, we did the resolution identifying county-owned lands available for affordable housing. You know, so we're supporting affordable housing through different areas, we're requiring new developments to provide affordable housing units. So for us, some of the projects, like tributaries, required to provide a hundred, a hundred affordable housing units. So although we're exempting this eighty to one-twenty, that doesn't mean that we're not for affordable housing, we just want to make sure it's done appropriately and in the right range, so it makes an impact again. We've talked about it on our sites or winter strategic planning sessions, the ship funding that we provide through our local housing assistance program, we've modified different programs to provide more funding to multifamily projects, not just the single-family homes and the repair and recovery there. And then through our planning stuff, we obviously have different incentive strategies as well. But basically, you know, this is where it kind of ends up at the end of the day, is there are many things that we're starting to do for affordable housing. If you're familiar with the county ship program for affordable housing, we used to be at the minimum, we used to receive about three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year. We get about a million dollars a year now, and so we're trying to get that out in the community as much as possible. But as we see it, most of our affordable housing projects, everything we're working on is, we want to get them below that eighty percent, mostly in the fifty to sixty percent to truly make the impact. So my commission basically passed that, that resolution so that we bypassed that exemption of property taxes for the eighty to one-twenty, knowing that we have other impacts, other desires to hit other categories. So with that, that's a quick overview of the presentation and available for any questions.
So kind of the way I understand, I'm not sure right up in here or over the, uh, more of the cities, but they're allowed to also use maximum density, too. So they, they came in and asked for two-hundred units, but this were to go through, they can actually use whatever the maximum is without having to come back to the board, if y'all been administered staff, correct?
So there, I'll give you my rough generalization, but basically, when you're looking at densities, when you're looking at elevation, there are other factors that the state is basically preempting our rights to provide a planning process to make sure it's done right through the P U D and, and different entities. And so from that standpoint, that's, again, a lot that's going on with legislation this year. There have been modifying different things. I can tell you that our county attorney is basically talking daily with our lobbyists. We're providing different language, trying to help modify some of these things, because they're going to different ends of the spectrum, and that's kind of the concern we're looking at right now.
Yeah, I know that the league is against it, but that's one of the big, you know, big thing for us, is if they came into max density, we have no control, but then it creates the demand on our infrastructure without wanting to increase that, but even be able to negotiate with Bud. So I mean, that's a pretty big deal on that.
Yeah. And this year, under the legislation, I mean, they're trying to, the first version of this, a lot of the attorneys said that P U Ds did not fall under this, but the current legislation is trying to put language that says, we don't care if you're a P U D or not, you're still going to be able to do this. So there's a big fight going on there, let's just put it that way.
At, at first read of this, it, it sounds like something good, you know, when you first read that. And my first thought when I read it and then heard the county's against it, I said, how can they be against something that is a tax break for people, you know, lower-income people? But hearing your explanation of it and seeing that, and seeing those numbers, it's a whole lot different than that, to hear that versus what it sounds like from the outside looking in.
Yes. And, and I do want to stress, you know, we're doing a lot of things to try to provide more affordable housing, from even looking at our different land use to provide higher densities in different areas that provides a walkability for those units as well. And so we're trying to tackle it from many different areas. We had our tiny home village, we're working through a project on that, trying to get more of the ship funds, we modified it for multifamily units so that we could provide almost up to half a million dollars for a project, just to get affordable housing units in. And so we're working on it on different perspectives, but we didn't feel it was right to waive property taxes for market rate units, when our real need is on the other end at that fifty to sixty.
And I personally don't think tiny homes are an answer to that. And I personally don't think tiny homes are an answer to that. I think that gives somebody a shed to live in. Don't get me wrong, but, but I just don't think that's an answer for a family by any means.
Correct. For a family, it would be difficult to be in that unit, yes.
Yeah, and I think for us, the fact that we're moving to such a large area, you know, the Jacksonville itself, you know, I mean, for us, you know, at the top end of that, that's twenty-six thousand, two-eighty a year is the top number, I mean, that's a lot more than a lot of people in this area may.
Yes.
Thank you for your explanation.
Perfect. Any other questions?
Any other questions for Marshall?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Marshall. All right, item number four, town council to review and discuss the draft resolution regarding property tax exemption portion of the live local act following, following President's text by Marshall, Ms. Walnuts.
Okay, so, you know, this is something we've been working on for, for a little over a month, following suit with the county and some advice from the property appraiser's office. Christian, his team wrote up a sample resolution for you here with the same level of exemption that the county has. Based on Marshall's presentation, you know that apartments below this eighty percent threshold, which could qualify for the hundred percent tax break, is just a market rate apartment in Hilliard. So I, I kind of need some direction from you. Do you want me to have Christian, his team, evaluate expanding this to include a broader range, or are you, are you happy with this range? Some of my concerns with this, Councilman Walnuts pointed them out, requires administrative oversight and approvals, we can't get out of that portion. The only thing we're really doing here is reducing the attractiveness of market value apartments. So they're really talking about expanding it this year, it's the negotiations at the state level to expand this project where they could do more housing in more places, more density, higher buildings, more land qualifies under some of the potential provisions they're going to be making. And you know, because of the PUDs that have come through here in the last two years, we negotiate hard to get the infrastructure improvement we need on the front end of that, and that happens with you guys and in public hearings. So when these projects come in, they're exempt from that portion, we, we lose a lot of our ability to negotiate for some of those things that we need, and then if we also exempt them from taxes, it's on the burden of our people who already live here to make those expansions. So in Christian's words, it is a policy decision that you are welcome to make if you choose, but you have to direct us what this resolution should say, and then you have to adopt or not adopt. This isn't something that your administrative staff can decide for you or your legal staff can decide for you. So do you want Christian, his team, to look at expanding this, or are you ready for Lisa to bring it back?
And how are we going to know how to expand it from what it is until we hear more about what the legislation they're trying to pass?
I think she just said down north.
Well, I think you, so it, this legislation already exists. This legislation already exists, and market value one-bedroom apartments in Hilliard already are below the eighty percent threshold right now. So they could, they could get the hundred percent tax break at this moment.
Existing can't get it, correct?
In the expanded version, existing can go back and ask for some. Right now, I believe it's just new construction.
It's just new construction currently, five years.
Five years, they can go back five.
Five.
You just need to consider. And then Lisa and/or I just need some direction about moving forward. Are you ready to see this for adoption? Do you want to see a potential expanded version of this?
An expansion, you're, you're saying lower the percentage?
Lower the percentage, lower the percentage.
Whatever, or example together, whatever you want to do.
Yes, and these projects are coming, and they're coming to our side of the county. Our, our neighbors to the south have, have a potential project that's coming up right now.
I definitely think we should be in control of this, and whatever that takes to expand, to put us in control, but that is one thing to negotiate that in the end, but it's something that...
Well, the only thing you can control is allowing the tax exemption or not allowing a tax exemption. The rest of it is beyond your control because the state legislature's already passed it.
So we got to decide.
But I think your point, but I think your point is that, you know, we, we can always undo this as well, you know, if for some reason you wanted to do that, this does kind of stop the floodgates and establish some control, perhaps.
And then you can always reevaluate if whatever's in legislation now, whatever form comes out of legislation this year, you can reevaluate.
What do we have to do to be able to put the infrastructure upfront like we, like what we're working hard to do now? What makes that work?
Hope that they pick property that's not commercial or industrial, and hope they bring it to you as a PUD before the next phase of legislation gets through. That's the only way for you to negotiate it. So, so I'll give an example, I'll give an example. If the land we annexed for the apartment project, if it had been industrial land, you would have never heard that in public hearing, I would have had to give administrative approval, and it'd be being done. So where you negotiated to own a lift station, own a generator, expand water capacity, I, I would have had to ask for that, I would have had to show the utility manuals and tell them it's the right thing to do, but those additional things, not owning the road, expanding the park that you negotiated through public hearings, that, that doesn't, it won't happen. That doesn't happen under this provision, and like, in your industrial land and your commercial land, so right next...
Without doing what?
Without coming to public hearings, without having to go...
Without doing what? That doesn't happen.
This, that can happen no matter what. You can't stop that. What you, what you can do is make it less attractive by not also allowing them tax exemptions on top of that.
So Christian, if we were to just opt out of it altogether, can we negotiate tax exemption individually with different people, would that be discriminatory because you're treating different people different ways?
Well, I, I, look, I mean, I'm not necessarily an expert in this candidly, but it's my understanding that we're not nego, it's not something we can pick and choose on, and we shouldn't. I mean, I would advise you not to.
I mean...
Okay, I see. All right, so Marshall thinks because there's a shortfall of units in that below eighty percent rate in all of the Jacksonville area, that we may not be allowed to expand the tax exemption, we may be stuck at that one eighty to one-twenty. We'll have Christian look into that.
So we can only exempt the eighty to one-twenty?
That's Marshall's belief, we'll have Christian check.
I, I, I suspect he's right.
Okay.
Say that again, Christian.
Christian suspects that he's right.
Yeah, yeah.
So then you couldn't expand this, you could adopt this or let it go.
I'd say we got to adopt it, at least stop some of it.
I just want to ask a question. I noticed in reading this today, unfortunately, I didn't get to the very end until today, this resolution that you had drafted, Christian, it actually says that it wouldn't take effect until January first of twenty-six, and it shall expire on January first of twenty-seven. I know the county took care of this in oh twenty-four, and theirs took place in January of twenty-five. Would that mean that we wouldn't be allowing exemption if something come before January of twenty-six, and does this have to be renewed every year?
Christian, did you hear Lisa's question?
I, I think I did. I think we chose that because of the way that the taxes are assessed and, and how they're going to accrue. I'll get back to you, I don't necess, I don't know if I'm sure about the answer to that.
So we may be able to change the effective dates and the renewal dates?
Right, yeah, I don't know if we, I mean, I, we did this in an abundance of caution, given the fact that we're already in twenty-twenty-five and, you know, a quarter of the way through twenty-twenty-five, so...
Did you do it to follow suit with the county, Christian, because section three of counties is the same way?
Yeah.
It's January first to January first also.
That's what we did.
Okay. Sounds like our hands are totally out of the game now with the adoption resolution.
So are you ready for it to come in this form, or do you want Christian to review the effective dates and make it the soonest possible effective date, and then that's the form you would like to adopt?
Yes, I think the soonest possible effective date can make sure we can't expand it.
Okay, can we have a motion that includes all those things, and then we'll have Christian, his team, get to work on it, and Lisa, and I'll have it back before you as quickly as we can.
Which part did you need in there?
Expand if possible to below the eighty percent and soonest possible effective date.
Yes.
Would it still follow suit, noting in the end of the year, to follow what the county's going to do?
You got to check that.
Uh, Christian's going to check that for us, and he'll let us know when we come for adoption.
I'll second it. Madam Court, do you have everything you need?
Christian, do you have everything you need?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
May I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, item number five. We've never had this happen before, but we have someone who wants to speak on adding an addition to the agenda, so we'll have him speak first, Mr. Fisk.
I'm here to ask council members to think about adding possibility of giving those who took their own transportation to Tallahassee a gas stipend and maybe a lunch stipend. I think that's only fair that the town provides that. My concern more totally was liabilities when I raised it. I prefer that you rented a U-Haul truck, a van, I mean, but I'd like that motion considered. I'd like to, a motion to be considered for me to present evidence that I believe my public request, request of being slow-walked. I have three pa, I committed four pages, I got answers to one page. I haven't been set up with an appointment to see what I want to see, and I believe it's being slow-walked. Lastly, I'd like either a special workshop or a special meeting scheduled to go over the discussion of how this town is going to bring the shared use path up to ADA compliance, because I want it done. I am ADA, and very shortly I'll be using a walker and a wheelchair, so I want that path fixed to ADA compliance. I don't know how you people overlooked it. It's very easy in law to look at that, that had to be ADA compliant, and it ain't. I know it ain't going to be an easy fix, and I'd like to know if the people, the state grant money knew that you tore that path up to replace it, and what did they think? I don't think you told them, I just don't, but I hope you did, because I really feel right now I'm a whistleblower, and I feel I need some no retributions. And Mr. Hunter, I'd love to visit the airport with you sometime. Thank you all.
Mr. Fisk, I do have a question. You, you keep mentioning a shared use path. We do not have a shared use, use path, that is a walking path.
And a bike path.
It's not a bike path.
When did you take the sign down? I have pictures.
This is additions and deletions.
No, it ain't ridiculous.
He said additions or deletions.
I, I got pictures saying it's a bike path, and it was...
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Mr. Fisk, you, you, you had your, your say on the addition or deletions?
All right, I'd like you all to vote on the three items I asked for. Thank you all.
Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Ms. Madam Court, what are the three?
The first one was a motion to consider a gas and meal stipend for the ones that did the trip to Tallahassee. The second is...
Let's address one at a time, if you don't mind.
Okay.
I'll make the motion add, that one, item fifteen.
Second. All right, you got a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
All right, that's for the trip, all right? What was the second one?
The second one was he, I don't know what he's asking for, but he's saying that he believes his public records request is being slow-walked, is what he refers to it as.
As for me, I prefer to say it on a different agenda, via supporting documents, he can submit, they don't give us a chance to, that way we can actually look and see what the documents are and where they are at in the process. We can get a chance to see both sides, office side and Mr. Fisk, if not personal. I'm just putting it out there to me. It's all for both sides of them, they're going to go in and...
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm good with that.
Not look at timelines without, you know, it's not clear with the resolution tonight, we'll look at tonight, right?
I'm good with that, I mean, we haven't seen the public, I mean, the office is handling that, so, yeah, I agree with that.
So that would be to see his side, and it should be time stamped through our office, whichever one I do. I'll make that form the motion.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
The third item was that we set a special meeting or workshop to discuss how the shared use path, used path is going to be fixed to be in compliance with ADA.
Same thing, so what's our workshop look like this morning?
There's, and, help me, workshop monthly, three items on it so far? Two, I ha, I have two, and I have one for sure.
Everybody go ahead and put on the workshop.
Add it for next week.
Madam Court, can you get the supporting documents for that, please?
We don't need to have this as an item, it's just going to be an item on the workshop.
We'll discuss it there and figure it out, if we need to add it, and add it in the next one, which then we'll be able to look at, overlook it then.
Okay, do you want both of them added to the workshop, item two and item three?
No, I'm good with that, well, I mean, if you guys want on the next agenda, we want item two on the workshop.
Item two was the slow-walking of the public record. No, I don't think that needs to be on the workshop.
Put it on the next agenda, two with the agenda, and we see where everything else.
Should I put it on the next agenda?
Number two.
Yeah, not the workshop.
I'll make a motion, we had number three in next week's workshop, that's next, right?
Next week.
Second.
I understand that, no?
All right, item fifteen was the trip.
Right.
Item sixteen is the slow-walk, that's going to be on the next agenda?
Yeah, we're not addressing it tonight.
Okay, or whatever, yeah, yeah, the second item, and then his third item, we're going to add it to...
Next week's workshop.
To the workshop. It's not an item tonight, but we're going to add it as the item on the workshop.
You get motions to both on the last one?
Yeah, you need to call roll.
Okay, we have a motion, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, any other additions or deletions?
I don't know.
All right, seeing none. Item number six, the town council approval of the design proposal for the construction of West Sixth Street with Peters Yaffe Transportation and Traffic Engineering with Mr. Doug Atkins of Daystream Commons LLC paying the cost in the amount of one hundred and one thousand six hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty-six cents. Ms. Purvis, where do you want Doug?
Um, no, I just wanted to let you all know that we were successful in piggybacking off of Nassau County's RFQs for the design work and then for the CEI work, which will come from the grant. They had to be done by two different engineering firms. Mr. Eric Lanning with Peters and Yaffe, he's done extensive work with DOT, he's going to be the one, and working with the director that the grant is under, that will have to review this design plan. this design plan prior to the work being done as part of the phase. You all had asked that I obtain the money upfront from Mr. Atkins, which he did wire last week, I think it was, or the week before. And so Mr. Lanning is aware that this was gonna be on the agenda tonight for approval. And it's to get it started so that his engineer will know what type of grade and all that for his work to be done on his site for his development.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? And sorry, Mr. Atkins, I didn't see, I guess you were mixed up in all the crowd that was in there. I didn't see you earlier. Uh, item number seven, the town council approval to set a workshop for the review of the preliminary tentative annual financial statements for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, prior to the April seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting at six P M. So my question is, why don't we just add it to our regular workshop? We feel they could keep adding workshops.
Because this takes about an hour to go over.
Okay.
Now we've got two, three, four items on the agenda.
I'd rather be here long one night, first of all.
How many we have, how many items we have in the last workshop?
We need to say it because I've also got him working towards the state because this is the way we handled it last year.
So you figured out, like, you figured out something before you asked the council?
No, I was.
You decided you aren't even, you've had to work with him because you've got to set another day.
It's set on a deadline and you will need to be extended if he has to have it prepared.
So when do we have to have this reviewed?
By the seventeenth, then I'm beating someone to the tenth.
So we have to have it, like, statutorily reviewed by the seventeenth?
No.
We can have it done on the tenth.
Well, if he can't get it done by the tenth, my question is, can you just do it next month?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I mean. I didn't make a decision. I just talked to him about the fact that if we could do it all in one night, then he could get, have that much time to have it all ready. And so I hate to now go back and say, hey, I needed a week earlier.
Give him another month. If we can't get it done this month, then put it on workshop for next month. In the mail.
Well, I was just following suit, which I've been doing here lately.
This year we started workshops though.
To eliminate.
All, all on.
And we've had several before meetings at six o'clock. That's all I'm saying.
So we're moving it to the workshop on May eighth?
Can't reach out his mind.
Is that what we're doing?
Yeah, I'll have to see if he can have it ready by the tenth. If he can't, then we'll move it to the May workshop and he'll have to deliver it the second being in May. I mean, statutorily has to be done by June thirty.
Okay.
I mean, but.
And if you do notice recently, there's been several towns that have gotten in trouble for not having theirs done for years.
We've not ever.
So you're only just give with him? Do you do any motion? Just give with him to see if he can have it ready by the tenth or the eighth, ninth?
Yep. And I'm very sorry if I ever would have thought y'all would have said that I never would have went this route.
All good.
Alright, item number eight, town council to consider the park facility use agreement for First Baptist Church to Higgin's Community Event at the Town Hall Park on Saturday, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, four P M through six P M. Mr. Gabe?
Yeah, so this First Baptist Church has been a great partner. They've volun- put a lot of volunteer time in some of our other local parks over the past several years. They've historically requested to have this at our Oxford Street Park. We're in the middle of spring soccer. That'll be our second week of spring soccer, so they can't have it there because the times don't match up because we have soccer until five P M. So the request is to have it here and that's what's in front of you.
Wasn't that last year too?
It got rained out last.
Got rained out last year, but not here. I believe it was still gonna be at Oxford Park. The reason why, the move to the location is due to.
If I had a vote, I'd vote for it.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Um, one question, he gave number three on our user information. You have just like individual company partnerships. We have nonprofits on there as well.
Probably. I can get with Christian. That's the agreement Christian's provided in recent history, so we can have it amended. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, probably incorporated technically, but I mean, I get your point.
Did we finish the vote?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, item number nine, town council approval of town employee Rebecca Miranda's pay increase. Mr. Gabe?
Yes, I provided, um, we've had some iterations of, we've, in the discussion of our resolution, uh, there's been some discussion about the job title, uh, in our resolution and at the same time, at budget time, um, it was discussed as well. This is a title that's not, has not been part of our salary study. Um, as I've stepped back and reflected since, you know, as you guys know, the department has changed over the past, I guess, six months now with the addition of two staff members. And as I step back and reflect on it, I think the background I provided in the recommendation, um, is warranted. I will, so just, I'm not a micromanager and my philosophy is let people do their jobs, uh, give them the credit for the great work they do and then for my responsibility is to take the blame when they don't do so well. So, um, I think she does a great job. I think it falls in line with the rest of the structure of the, um, department that's continuing to grow. Um, our, our programs are growing. I, I don't want to rehash what I've already outlined here, but my recommendation is to, this puts her in line with the program manager and I see those as, uh, siloed responsibilities, um, within the organization. Uh, they both have supervisory experience over larger staffs in the summer. Her role is throughout the year as well with the other, uh, after school program we have. And it allows me to, uh, be more strategic and address things that are kind of not in the day to day or the, the additional things. So anyway, not to beat a dead horse, but, um, my recommendation is to slot her at, uh, grade five step two, which is in line with the, the program manager and allows for some, um, tenure as well.
Motion to approve, Gabe's, during the day, so second. I got a comment. I did speak to Gabe today and my one thing is we're mid-cycle. So pay rates in this cycle, but I do understand he explained a little better to me about the two siloed positions of doing it, you know, the way he kind of runs it. And he made a little bit more sense to me what he was saying. He did, you know, he did admit he should have done it probably back in October, but there was a lot of new parts. So with that being said, both he and the clerk have kind of come up with this, uh, manager, office manager position, trying to really see them collaborate, especially if we're working in redoing some of our job titles, I can figure out what exactly that office manager.
Yeah.
Look like, what that terminology is, job description. We really don't have them listed right now.
And I've talked to Gabe too and I, although I would have rather this waited until budget time, I understand his need to feel to do this now. And I told him that may, you know, he may have a bearing on what happens in budget time, but I was definitely okay with this now and why his reason was for it.
And all the comments? Alright, we got a motion. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Can I say something really fast? Cause I'm gonna go to soccer. Um, I wanna just, I'm gonna try not to get emotional. I, uh, I really appreciate working here. Uh, there's, I have family on the wall behind you. You do too. Um, but I mean, I, I care about this place. I think my employees definitely care about this place and they're not my employees. They're, 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 they're the town's employees and they, and they do a great job and we're, and we're growing. Because I think that bears out in our work. We really do care about, um, being out in the community and helping the community and giving the community a place to come and things to do. I have a vested interest in the town. Um, yeah, my name's on the football, not my specific name, but my legacy's on the football stadium. I've, I've spent a lot of, I've dedicated a lot of time to the youth of this town for no pay. Um, and I would. No, no, no. I'm talking about, for twenty years, for twenty years, I volunteered my time to, to the town and, um, I just want to say I'm grateful for an opportunity to actually work at, work and get paid to do something that I love. Uh, and it's not about the dollars and cents and I don't think it's about the dollars and cents for, for these guys either. I, I just, I'm just very appreciative and, um, thankful for y'all.
I think, I think they are your employees and I think they're lucky to have you.
Thank you.
Well, just like we're lucky to have them. So I, I just.
I, I know that, that Gabe is well loved in this town because anytime I go to the elementary school, I want Gabe to go with me because everybody knows Gabe.
Well, I mean, I don't know what got placed on my heart, but kids just, I mean, it's the, the, I can't say enough how much to see a kid light up and experienced team for the first time, there's nothing like it. So, anyway, sorry, I got emotional.
Is that your, uh, report for tonight, Tim?
Hundred and sixty-two kids up.
Okay. Alright, item number eleven, town council approval of L and M's Drilling Water Works payable through March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five.
Number two, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, did we do, now skip it? Okay. We gotta put, we gotta put the minutes. I had it already checked off. Town council approval of the minutes for the March thirteenth. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Now item eleven is the approval of the Water Works Project Dane Well, number four, pump replacement in amount of thirty-five, one twenty-five, fifteen.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Item number twelve, town council approval of Lamp Roy and Associates Incorporated payable through March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, project named Land Along Eastwood Road at the Higgin Air Park in the amount of twelve hundred dollars.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Item thirteen, town council approval of Mid Tower and Associates Incorporated payable through March fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, project named Manhole One Sixty-seven and One Seventy repairs in the amount of fifty-seven hundred and sixty dollars.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Item number fourteen, town council approval of Rudy Williams Apprezzabru LLC payable through March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, project named Land Along Eastwood Road at the Higgin Air Park in the amount of two thousand dollars.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Alright, item number fifteen, the reimbursement for the trip to Tallahassee.
So I know I had to leave work and I came late and I drove my own vehicle, but I'm not gonna take gas and lunch.
Now, I said before, I do this for the town. I don't do it for anybody else. And, um, if it costs me a little bit of money in my pocket to do it, I, I don't, I don't mind one bit giving it up. I mean, if I gotta take off work to go, it doesn't bother me because. The projects that we have and we need are a big deal and the only way we're gonna do it is if we do it, then we push for them ourselves. And I know that our state legislators listen to us when we go, the opportunity to get to sit down in their office and talk to them. It's, it's, it's cheaper than paying somebody else to do it for us and I don't mind at all giving my time, my little bit of money. I mean, I'd eat in that day anyway, so.
No, I agree a hundred percent. I, I just feel like it's just, you know, we don't do this for the money. You know, obviously we don't do it for the money and that's just one more thing that we don't do for the money.
I mean, and even if we had to rent a vehicle, it's gonna cost a citizen some money and I'd rather not burden any, any, any more than we have to.
And I'm thankful for the thought that a, that a citizen thought that we, we should, because I did drive and I did pay for gas. But that was, I, I wouldn't take a dime for it, so.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
You know, you would have spent that church bus and I know the state pulled off everything off campus. And I wish they had because that, you know, separated certain states, not, and I was claiming something down, but I know this is. And I really think, you know, when you were a gate church, we needed to get gas and food. And that's just my thing. I know you're driving now.
Not at all.
Alright, so no motion is made on that. So do we have any public input? Seeing none?
Yeah.
Like I said, you people deserve that, you know? You really should take it. I'm not saying, you know, a hundred bucks each or whatever, but be reasonable. Let's be honest. We sent you. You went there on behalf of us. I know most times I don't feel like you listen to me because no one ever talks. You know, no one ever says, hey, Tim, what did you mean by that? Or, hey, can you show me proof of this? And a lot of times I do. I'll tell you, I got this total law book at home, total set. Just so you know that. So when I come in, I do know what I'm talking about for the most part. Once a while I gotta eat crow. Like when I said you had to replace the equipment in ten years, it's thirty. Alright, but everything I say up here, I'll take the lie detector test to prove I'm right. And I know most of you people wouldn't, but you all have a great night and thank you for letting me spurt my attitude. And I really do look forward to learning a little bit about the airport. You're gonna be the first one I braves with. Have a great night. God bless us all.
Alright, do we have any other public input? Seeing none, uh, Councilman Waters?
Big thank you to everybody who showed up for our town cleanup, everybody who donated, volunteers and forestry for cooking for us. And a big shout out to the election workers, you know, we get to see them on two different sides. We get to see them in the polls and we deal with them on the phones and countless reports we have to do. So, um, they, they do a lot and I'm thankful that we have them, that they do it. So I have.
Councilman Michaels?
Councilman Turner.
Councilman Hunter?
Nothing bad.
Councilman Picket?
Pretty much what Derek said was spot on. Also keep, uh, the McCullough family in your prayers.
That's it.
Council President Sam?
Yeah, we lost Eric Lewis this week. We lost Mr. Ray this week. That was a big loss to town. Big show up for the cleanup out here. I don't know if you're gonna talk about it or not, but we haven't had a week since that happened. But it was a, a good turnout that day and, and good weather for it and, uh, and I want to thank Mr. Fisk for thinking that, you know, and knowing that what we did was for the town and that they did send us and what we go for is, is whatever we can get to better, better the community and, uh, but what I do and I'm fortunate enough to have a job that I can take off from and, and have time that I can still get paid at work and the little bit that I pay for gas to go there was, you know, just, I'll be blessed for that for anything that happens in this town for years to come. And, uh, and I will take a lie detector test for anything I've ever said up here, Mr. Fisk. I promise you any day of the week. So, and, uh, that's all I got.
I'd take one too. I, I don't think, I, I have nothing to hide from the town. Oh.
But I. I relied it was about John.
But I, 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 there's too many people to thank for the cleanup. Um, it was, it was, uh, a, a lot of people out there. Um, we appreciate everybody that showed up. Um, again, from people that cook, people that cleaned up, people that volunteered, people that was there, given of their time and their day. I appreciate it all. Um, I know we're gonna have one more meeting before, but just always remember that on the, uh, Easter weekend is the Vietnam Memorial Wall. I'm not sure you guys take some time to go by and see it. And I'm sorry, I've been getting texts throughout the night, but my granddaughter's playing, they're, they're playing Callahan tonight and they're up ten to six and, uh, going into the seventh inning, so trying to find out what the score is, but that's all I've got.
Any news on Buc-Ee's?
That was not me.
We are gonna have to rearrange our interchange up here to handle Buc-Ee's.
People know how I feel about.
That, that was a cruel joke, cruel joke.
And I was no part of that. Um, because we don't have anybody from public works, gate church.
I will say that about, Cory had some dental work done today, so he knew that he, he's scared of that when it comes to that. So he was gonna be put under and he was scared that he would come and say something that he shouldn't say by still being under some man. by still being under some mask. So he, he told me earlier this week that he would not be here anymore because.
Okay.
That's why Cory's.
And gave, gave his report, he's out at soccer. Soccer starts on the 12th, so go watch the little kids play.
They've been practicing.
Yeah, you can see him out your door.
Every night.
Councilor.
I've got nothing, thank you.
Are we back in the state yet?
Oh, I'm back.
Okay. All right.
Motion to adjourn.